I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its own with no reason to struggle.
Thank you. Right, okay. Eric Wood is here. All right, location of the meeting? Craftly posted. A recommendation to approve notes from the January 12th public hearing of the January 12th way going forward.
Second.
Okay, move by Craig, signed by Amy to approve the notes for the January 12th meetings. Any discussion, any changes? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
By host. Here. Resolution approval bill list.
Washington to approve the bill list.
Okay, move by Amy.
Second.
Signed by Tim to approve the bill list. Okay, discussion questions? Uh-oh, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who carry. All right. It's all right, so we have some guests.
Yes, so if I make this statement, we do really important work here at Arrowhead. Your minds might initially go to teachers in the class. But I'm here to tell you, and so is Pierce for Pierce, here to tell you that students do really important work here too. It's their school, and this group is impactful in a meaningful way on themselves and their peers. Peers for peers, so I'll turn it over to our, the counselor advisors and the students, and they can take it from there. Thomas Stubber and Barb White are both counselors here at South Campus.
Okay, we're Pierce for Pierce, my name is Avery Donna, I've been at the club for two years, co-president.
Hi, Adam, I'm the other co-president, I've also been at the club for two years.
I'm Candy, and I'm the co-committee leader of the one-off workshop, and I've also been through Montseas, and I've been at the club for two years, and I am co-committee leader of the events.
I'm Kara, I've been here for two years, and I'm a co-president. Um, Pierce for Pierce has several goals that make us such a successful club. We go around on the Arrowhead website with Pierce for Pierce. Our goal is to become supportive peers for our fellow students who are in need of help with homework, mental health support, or any other challenges that they're going through. And we're trained to create, to have healthy lifestyles and be the support for our fellow classmates.
So our commitment to being part of this club is to win, drug and alcohol free. Every single peer has to make this promise to be part of the club and carry this stuff and be part of the club forward in life. And then we also want to provide additional support through all our peers and mentors to be that work. Are we, yeah.
Throughout the year, we participate in training, so far they've been at WCTC. We take part in these trainings with fellow schools in the area that are also part of Pierce for Pierce. At these trainings, we learn how to be confidential supporters, how we can support and we're trained in others' field for in this club, as well as listening to fellow speakers. We also have several committees that help run our club. So I'll be to be involved with Pierce for Pierce, so that includes on our Instagram page will be for our events that are going on, and then we give out posters or a tool that kids should book on and then see if they're and where we stand and like volunteer at our own events, be in that's like for teens, be supporting other peers from school, or like learning how to support each other within the club. And there is small events. For our workshop, we stand out with an event that's a month, and each month has a certain theme, and we try to make a less time for each one, we'll also have like
So our peer support, this has to also do with outreach too. Around the school, we have these QR codes or like scanner codes that you can scan. And around the school, and you can request to see a peer, any peer. And with this, you can do anything, homework to mental health, anything that you want to appear for. So we're here for our students. Very accessible.
We also have a lot of other club activities that everyone takes part in. Each member has been a weight mentor, which we train throughout the summer to help the incoming freshmen to be part of our club. We also bring letters to support specific students, as well as just give encouragement to our fellow students. As picture, we took part in a charter trade with a couple of cars, and we also have a P S A R event. We're all going nice and
That's it. Awesome. I'm just gonna turn off.
There's about forty of us.
What's the junior senior?
There are before South Campus, I thought. That's, that's, yeah.
And how many peers are you reaching out to, maybe on a schoolier basis?
So monthly, our peers are asked to fill out the contacts per month, so this can be just offering emotional support to friends, homework help, just any support that you offer to friends. You're asked to fill out a Google form, and each one can get you a point in the club, but it also helps us track the contacts they're going through. If there's a mandatory reporting situation, it just kind of helps show our progress and impact.
Also, we have to, we have a sort of a depression where it's signed to, and we email out to those freshmen. So I mean, I have conversations from them, so I have that. Oh, and you get a scan through the QR codes and inquiry through that.
So it goes through us counselors first, and we kind of scan it, and then we have to sign if it's a question or not.
Okay.
So within that day.
We have a training, we have a training at WCTC, and with Jeff, your peer to peer group, or with other schools, provide, or?
Yeah, it's with about like five other schools. So we'll have training sessions together, and then we'll also have time where it's just our club to kind of talk about what we learned and how to use it.
Is your group synced or linked in any way to similar groups that are found on, say, a college or university campus? It just seems like, you know, for continuity.
I think we're supposed to be linked to a college or university, but we're training at WCTC in most schools, and we get trained.
Those that do that, a lot of these kids are about, peers do apply for positions, have a hold on to be RA or something like that. And this is like a fantastic, you know, kind of their cap for those types of activities. So we have seen players that get those jobs, get those
Thank you.
Do you find that longer term friendships develop with some of these?
Yeah, definitely freshman, like kind of have like, like a baby sister, like kind of connection with it. Be kind of like guys from through high school, and you're there for them no matter what, like. If they're going through a bad day, we tell our faculty that they know that they have to talk to them. So it's kind of like connections like that.
All right, have you ever encountered a situation where you feel like this is beyond my scope of expertise? And I was trying to do what, what would you do? Have something you're proud of, it's very exciting.
We are trained to report, as you said, and we go to Yeah, so we are trained to tell anyone who's in a situation of reporting, and what are those types of situations you have? And you report it. So if it's something where it might go through all of this, like that, you're
So hard to see, but it shows a lot of other
How long is the club in the world?
I think it's a year five. Trying to figure out how many years I started it, I think this is year five.
What are most of the inquiries that you get from students? Like what questions they have, is it? Social interaction, figure out what classes?
Um, it mostly, I would say how much of the school information they maybe would rather come to a person than to try to help.
I think especially talking with the freshman, I think it was kind of, where you said with that launch, or like things that make them nervous, things that cause stress, they want to just know, like, you've been through it, what did you do in this situation? Imagine this, what was this teacher like? Just kind of someone that's gone through it, even with the peers contacts and stuff, just gain that extra sort of support in that situation.
Do you think a lot of kids feel very comfortable approaching you, or is there any hesitancy or reluctance? Single out in any way?
I mean, you're at their age, so I did lots of security in that, but we are very special, same boat, so. Um, I mean, I, there might be a bit of that, but we try to make it the best we can to
How do you recruit new peers? I mean, it's gonna come up to the right, to the right sometime in the long term. I mean, it was actually had requested assistance from, from the peer group, or if you said, kind of interview?
Well, we have an interview process, so I don't know if these guys are really going, but a lot of kids, we promoted, come join peers as an application for their white transfer break line, and then from there, they have to go on an application. And they have different recommendations for that application. And then we actually interview with a company called Elevate, who helps us fund their peers. So they actually call me out and interview. So we interviewed every single one of our students, and then from there, we had Yeah, it's a long process, but we did. I think a lot of the students also had such great impact with the centers that I think a lot are attracted to take part in the program, and that automatically kind of brings the peers for peers, and like, having, being able to be that support for someone that favors them.
I think we hear so much about how great Wings is, but what you're telling us here is it has great residual long-term effect. I mean, it really, it enhances all
Games, they're giving like this help, so they definitely want to get that. And then I saw, I saw, I want to do it.
And here you are.
And if I could just say too, it's like a proud dad moment here, but these kids are wide wings. This is great.
Yeah.
This is the reason, these guys in here and the fifty others, forty others, that, that's what they
That's an impact. Helping others in being your own leadership still, empathy still, ready to manage. Are any of you thinking of careers that might have similar characteristics? You know, do you find yourself feeling, I need a career where I go to help people versus putting that in?
I feel like almost any career you're asked to help someone or teach giveaway, I feel like anything you do on this club that's gonna help I think it is, yeah.
I want to become a nurse. When I was, I was a nurse, and this club has strengthened my leadership skills, and it definitely pushed towards that career, and yeah.
Would you want to be school counselor?
We would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge that it is national school counselor. Barb and Thomas are part of that department, and Barb and Thomas both belong to the South Campus Counseling Office, where over the last few years, a lot of, some of the most exciting work that we've had at our school around students just feeling more connected to one another, and just supporting students' mental health has come out of. We had the Wings mentors, and Thomas oversaw that, and Barb was starting Pierce for Pierce, and Thomas was scratching his head and mucking up his hair as he does when he's stressed out, and was saying, I wish I could get the Wings mentors more involved throughout the year somehow. And they worked together to merge the program, so the Wings mentor started to feed Pierce for Pierce and kind of become the, the same thing. And as educators, what we try to do is figure out a way to get the students to lead and lead the learning, and have us do less of a talking and create the environment for them to do that. And I think that's exactly what we've created here, is the opportunity for students to take lead and ownership of how their fellow students feel throughout the, the school day. Another exciting thing that the South Campus Counseling Department came up with this year was, what do we do if students want to socialize at lunch, but maybe don't have a group to go to, or just want to socialize in a different way? So they created a game lunch, where every Wednesday, the kids go to, I think it's art classroom now, and bounce around a little bit, and they just play games, board games, whatever. I think Bingo's been the favorite for the last few years. We, we purchased Deadly Animals of the Outback, is that the correct title for it, Bingo Edition? So the kids are learning what the deadliest animals of the outback are while having fun at work. So they've done a tremendous job over the last five, six, seven years of figuring out how to support our students in different ways and to help them feel more connected, so happy national counseling.
How are we still being heard in that lunch?
Oh, yeah, well, today alone, today, I don't know, it's about six, seven, eight, about in twenty twenty-five, we average about twenty twenty-five. Because it isn't an art room, and you kind of shoot those that don't make it in, because you get too old already. But we call it brunch, where the kids meet enough, they call it brunch. We get some good stuff for us, and so now we have some new games that we get to pick with the kids, and try and do this, it's got a really big And it's good, really for the students who really never really follow or niche, I would say, in friends. And now it's just, it's a game, you totally watch. I should call sometimes Wednesday.
It's kind of funny to see the, the group mentality at lunch, because there, there are some hours where, like, we go in and announce it. As soon as we announce it, if nobody stands up right away, then, like, you can see the kids like, well, if somebody else could go, then I don't want to go. It's like, there's some days where we don't, we get a very small number, like one or two, and then, but if we could just get like three kids to come, then other kids see that, and they're like, oh, it's okay to go, and then we have to put like, do it.
Do you get kids that might be going coming to see?
Like these guys?
Yeah, or, or, yeah, we get, or do this lunch.
Oh, yeah, for the lunch, it's mostly just for fun, so it is definitely, kids don't know people, and then they get kind of formed. So, yeah, I would say they kind of form a group, and probably the niche, like if you go to the year one student, who definitely, they're all they're now, since like six, they go, they're on these sports, and they're, you know, so it's kind of nice to see that, like, go.
In regards to bullying, I would say, though, too, you know, these guys can speak to, just that, um, just, I think, for any student there, like going that, knowing that there's people out there that are always be supportive of them, just kind of be accepting of them. Those, I think it does provide something for students, you know, that we all know, you know, are, are experiencing trouble, but maybe others do too. So it's a very proactive, you know, place.
I haven't seen a lot of, like, of my peers getting bullied, which is such a great thing. But, like, I struggle with mental health the past two years, a lot of my friends struggle with mental health, like all their high school at such a tough time. And there was like an instance where my friend was struggling so badly, she, like, I had, it was something I had to mandatory report, about me and my friend, like, reported it to Mr. Stubber, and like, I physically saw her, like, getting so much better. And it's just, there's such a great feeling to, like, be able to help somebody like that and give that emotional support when I know she, like, was not this year counselor for that, and it, it just had to be something to be reported, so that's
The Wings program just took off, and a lot of other, other schools emulated the same program. Is that the same with Pierce for Pierce? Have a lot of schools adopted that program, sort of the success through it, or?
Well, because, yeah, Washington County has Pierce for Pierce, it's been almost four years, or five years, Washington County has Pierce for Pierce. And I guess that's, I think, five or six years ago, I was trying to get them to come here, and they had a lot of turnover up in Elevate, or, or, so, in Washington County. And then finally, we had brought them here, but then we were in a school, so if you want, who used to be in it, the Los, I tell you, or, um, oh, the Nami Falls, I know, it's over there, in our peers, so, so Nami Falls, and Los Angeles, the Los So we are actually, that's a pretty good, but it's nice, because we're not reading down the bill, we take a lot of their stuff, and helping us, trying to, trying to do things to have people go on one faster than I do, and sort of do that.
Thank you for coming, and if anybody else have any other questions, so that's, this is very light, so we brought all the information out of it. I know I didn't know much about it. That can't be all you got. That's all you got? Hey, we always got good news, a lot of good news. Okay, communications and comments for members of the public. Nobody signed up. I'll talk, of course. Just be short and sweet, it's more of a recommendation, I don't even know if this is a board action, but it's just a suggestion that maybe the board look at other year school boards, and look at your, look at the layout of the tables. The president's always in the middle, played by his officers, and then regular school board members and administrators are opposite side. I would recommend that, you consider doing that yourselves. That's it. All right. Maybe reports, this looks like it's gonna be a Charlotte, curriculum.
Our next meeting date is later, this one, a very quick one, yeah. We have a kind of meeting.
All right, let's record it. All right, great. We have a meeting tomorrow morning, very early, everybody's welcome. We're gonna talk about the auditor, is gonna share her, her, after looking at our business office. And then at Kent's recommendation of meeting our two back, we might look at, have initial discussion about how to maybe try to influence some legislation in favor of our school regarding taxation and revenue limits, and that's our, Jeff, anything else?
And then we'll go over the enrollment, financial projection. Okay, and there's, there's a number of links in there, so some of the things, the spreadsheets of things are kind of small, get front of them out. It's probably gonna be easiest to read them on your computer, so bring your laptops with you.
I checked the agenda just before I left the office tonight, thinking that, am I get a chance to review the executive summary of the audit?
It's linked to the agenda, so, just recently, or just before the meeting.
Can, can I, curriculum, are we going back to seven o'clock instead of six forty-five? Looks like it, according to this, while you're
Is that your understanding, Sue?
What?
Is that your understanding as well?
That's what we discussed, yeah. Okay, so it's at seven now? Okay, all right, thanks. But come early, because the traffic is packed at seven. You're early, we'll end up being here at six thirty anyway, really.
That's right.
Well, you're out, we have a meeting, next one will be determined at the time. Yeah, it probably, yeah, not in March, early April. Right, personnel.
We've had a couple of meetings since our last board. First one was a excellent review of staff survey and, uh, your role satisfaction of staff members of all stripes. I think most of us were there for that one, that, or presented it, or anything that's, like, comment on, or the, the staff survey, or the information, I'm sure.
No, I, I guess in general, the staff survey was overwhelmingly positive. There were some, certainly some negative comments, or not agree, or strongly disagree. And then I remember, I think I brought it up at the committee, that I went through the survey results. Typically, you go through by question, so you see all the comments. Within a Google survey, you can also go through survey by survey. There's not a person's name or email address, but you can get a feel for if the negative comments are coming from thirty staff members, each giving one or two, or if it's by a small group. But we found it was by a small group, it was about six people, maybe half teachers, half support staff, that seemed disgruntled about everything, but otherwise very positive, and also some really good suggestions and feedback, questions being expressed, so it was good. And then the other thing I shared at the meeting was just the fact that across the country, there's a teacher shortage, and Wisconsin is not immune from that, nor is our, our immediate area. Arrowhead's been fortunate in terms of finding great teachers, the positions we have open. But where we used to have forty people apply, we may now have four, and one is superstar, and we grab them all. Most districts, and Arrowhead is not different in this one, support staff is a real issue. Two positions for us that have been hard to fill and turnover, it's been special ed aides and library aides. We tend to hire part-time, so they're not benefit eligible, and if they can go work at QuickTrip for eighteen dollars an hour and get benefits, or Arrowhead, or your Amazon, and get full health insurance for their family versus Arrowhead where they don't, who's employees, so that was also shared during that committee meeting. And within southeastern Wisconsin, our CISO one, all forty-five superintendents are talking about that and brainstorming. Are there things that we can do, what should we be looking at? Getting trend data to see if that informs creative ideas of how to attract some people into the teacher ranks, into the field of education, since it has dwindled during the last several years.
I have to say, the compilation of staff comments was, to be, in fact, I just, by happenstance, read through most of them the night before I went to the Bosby Convention, and it certainly made it interesting selecting some of the seminars that are available at the convention, because some of our comments, good and bad, are sort of ringing in my ears, and I'm like, okay, well, I know where I'm going for this. So I was appreciative of Laura's efforts of filing that, sharing that with us. And I felt like it was a hour well spent for this. Uh, we had a second meeting, again, many of you were present for that, that was last week, and we had a discussion of both agenda items going forward and a review of personnel practices here at Arrowhead. The, the, we reached a consensus that we're gonna proceed with that overall review. And then Laura did a wonderful job presenting an overview of the hiring, hiring and recruiting process, specifically in respect to the interview process, and the, of other things you specifically in regard to, to our principle, but then sort of expanded to address the things that we look for and the work that goes into selecting good teachers. So, thank you, Laura, appreciate it. Uh, our next personal committee meeting is coming up.
Monday, March fourteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Just confirmed that, that's what it's Just confirms that, that's what it's.
Policy.
I'm going to be meeting on March tenth to review a few different things, but I do want to make a suggestion to all the board members. Later on in the spring, we're going to do the annual review of the policy guide. If you would like to start going through all the policies and the procedures, that would be helpful so that the meeting, when we do have it, is not five hours long. I mean, if we can get through, if you can go through each policy and put a bullet point as to what you think would be. A possible change or expectation that you might have to make it better, feel free. Because it's generally a really long meeting. And so I'd like you all to be there to be able to put some input. So keep that in your mind. It's big policy guide, start now. I'm sorry, guys. You just come to what that is? The, for the annual review of the policy, yes.
May or June.
May, June, I'm not sure yet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, WSB, thank you. Then attended, attended the WSB, well, the state education conference primarily of the WSB. As the Tim part of it and Laura. I know very, it was. I think attendance was down quite a bit over past years. It had been down as much as, you know, maybe only a third of attendees perhaps. Sessions I attended were all, I thought they were all excellent. Quite a breadth of information that's out there presented to the board members I cast up. And I believe that's why that stuff is online through the WSB website. To do those. Do a lot of those seminars or a lot of those sessions. So if you have an opportunity, avail yourself of some of that stuff. Pretty good keynote speakers, I saw the keynote speakers on Monday. Went in Thursday, they were both absolutely excellent. They just blew away.
On the website?
Yeah.
Must one have been to the conference or registered for the conference to access that? Or can others who would never register access that? Do you?
I'm not sure. In the past, we haven't been able to.
Correct. I don't think so. And then someone can do.
Just curious.
Yeah. Keynotes are excellent. I were phenomenal. I wasn't there for Friday sessions. I didn't see that one, but. Yeah, they did a fantastic job. Can you have any?
Um, so that's the first Bosby convention I've ever been to. All people. The most useful seminar that I had was about the, a consultant who comes in and talks to school board about setting goals and coming up with common priorities and working and playing well. And I thought it was very reassuring to know that school boards who have been through that process seem to really embrace it as a, as a means to be more effective public servants. So that was a really good seminar. And I have to say they had a performance by a bunch of kids from up by Ash. And they had what they called a wire choir, which is a bunch of stringed instruments, so violins, cellos and all that stuff. Excellent kind of done with choreography to a pretty impressive beat. And I'm telling you, I'd pay money to go see this. Makes me a little regretful that we've taken our string orchestra out of Arrowhead. But we didn't have enough kids to do what these guys were doing. And so great things are happening even in the most remote parts of Wisconsin.
Or do you have any comments?
Okay. So if you attended the convention, you can access the recordings for fifty five dollars. If you did not attend, you can access that.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Point transaction. So we have four resignations. Do we have a motion to accept those as? As we're alluded to before, we have two libraries, special education aid on that list, so. So I mean, saying to approve the resignations, it's discussion.
Yeah, why are the two library aides? Is there any, is there an exit interview or anything to find out why or?
We have a, an exit interview survey. And within that survey, you can always meet with either Mary L's, our part-time human resource specialist, or with me, or with their supervisor. It's all optional, it's not forced. On this list, I'm not going to use names because there's private information, but one person has to deal with a significant illness of her husband. One person was on a leave of absence this year and decided not to come back into the career. One person has been here for more than a decade and is moving on to a different type of position, but plans on substitute, being a substitute here. And one person is moving on for a significant higher salary and benefits that they didn't have here at Arrowhead. And that was not necessarily in the order of the names, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah. But doesn't matter. We'll give Daryl credit.
Okay. If we have a discussion. All in favor of saying hi? Hi. All right. And we have a number of. We have three sports staff. There's appointment and boys and girls tracks coaches and assistant coaches. We have a motion to approve both. Second. Okay, move by Sue, second by Craig, for the discussion.
Just out of curiosity, these new library aides, do they come from other schools or from something other difference?
I do not believe they're coming from other schools, but I'm not positive about that.
Just.
And one of them, they just were hired in the last two days or so, so.
All of the favors say hi. Terry. Yeah, thank you. All right. And then the discussion of action to accept donation. We have three cars donated to us, our two cars donated to us this year. And. How's the court logo was donated by Coast Guard Services, which was very nice enough. And the five thousand dollars scholarship for Pat and Lori Fox for a special scholarship program. So we have a motion to approve those.
I have a question about the auto program. What does it work? Just because I'm like to how that, you know, all those cars come in, do they, does the auto group just, are they able to disassemble all of those? Is that just part of the education there or how does that?
My understanding is that it depends on the car itself. Some of the cars are in running condition. And so then that's as if you're an auto mechanic, let's look at the carburetors getting old, how do we replace that? Some of the cars are just like junk. So then it's tearing apart. It's looking at the equipment. Can we use a piece of equipment from this junker or a different car? Even junkers, you can change tires, you know, things, routine, things like that.
They also plan to swap them out, you know, so that they'll take all the donations they can get and then rotate through them so they're not looking at the same car over and over again. So actually they just sold one recently, or they're planning to sell one. Put it back for the program.
I guess I'd offer one comment on the Pat Lori Fox donation. Adam and I have been talking about establishing a fund to help current Arrowhead students with some optional educational opportunities outside of the Arrowhead campus. As well as some of our graduates attend post-secondary opportunities. And as the vision sort of came up. About a year ago, we had the Arrowhead Education Fund, Arrowhead Scholarship Fund, agreed to sell a couple of auction items dedicated to that purpose. And I had an opportunity to have a beer with Pat and Lori one evening and I told them what we were up to. I wasn't at the point where I was asking for money yet, but they were at the point where they were giving money. And so they're our very first individual donor for said fund. We've got a little over ten thousand dollars in there right now. I expect that that will grow over time and will get spent. As you're talking to people that are wondering how they can help, there's one way.
We'll have another beer with them.
We have lobster boils also going to be running April twenty second, live on the Arrowhead website. So get your tickets now. Daryl, you just want me to fill that out for you, right? Sure. Hand me that credit card, we'll get rolling.
It'll for all of us, true. Thank you.
Twelve lobster?
Have we decided how much the lobster dinner is going to cost?
Twenty four.
Twenty four dollars.
In your board brief memo, there'll be a blurb and a link to the wire, so you'll be able to order, you said it right from that link.
Yeah. You can just give straight cash to it for that.
Is it usually pretty well attended?
Yeah, so this is, we've, COVID again, as everything got way late, especially the spring stuff, gone for two years and we're learning how to do it. I had a conversation with John Howe on some details, a couple of his aides that were in the program doing it. And we had a new group of parents step up. I absolved Tim from being on the committee as he's brought in more money than we might get from the fundraiser already. But people were rare and ready to go and went out and got initial emails out this morning looking for student volunteers and all that. And it's been a, it's been a great reaction so far. So everybody's assured me that cooking lobsters is easy. I've never done it. So that's a other people's job to, when they get to that point.
And if you've ever come to that cafeteria.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I answered your question. It's been about like five hundred to John said a thousand at one point. Sales, takeout orders have really skyrocketed as well, so they're the takeout option as well.
It's amazing. And you've got kids involved and I mean, it's all the way around.
And a silent auction, great prices there. It's the, the twenty second lobster boil on April twenty second.
Okay.
So you'll remember the date, twenty second.
So as you're hustling to come home from work on Monday, Valentine's Day, and you're trying to figure out what you're going to put on the card that you're giving your suite.
Oh, yeah.
You're going to go take care of for under fifty dollars.
How hopeful we're being today, isn't it?
Such a romantic.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Drive, drive up and so far, I mean, these are the hard hitting questions we're getting tonight. But what we believe is going to happen is that you'll actually enter one of our doors. We thought about doing the drive up kind of callers idea with the sticky notes, but we're going to go with what's been done in the past, the first year before we make changes. And so we're all novices, come in, come in, let us know what you order. There's a timestamp, you get to select the time on our, when you go to register for it. So if you want to do takeout, you can just be like, I want to take out, I'll be there around six fifteen. So we know to get those lobsters in right away, get it ready for you. And then hopefully our, our exchange is quick. We'll see how that goes.
It's always a great event.
Yeah, it should be, it should be.
The community is all there. I mean, everybody's having a great time.
Yeah. A group of parents helping out with it too in best place is going to be great. So, yeah, it'll be, it'll be a good time.
So we have a motion to approve the donations.
Don't move. So let them go.
Any further discussions? Say hi. Terry, thank you.
The money man better.
Okay, discussion action on four, format, timing of the community conversation on the school board. Last Monday, when we had our. New discussion with the conversation with the board came up about having that same type of format prior to our board meetings. And as, as we said at the onset and on the agenda, that mean that they'll actually be taking it at that time. That's why this is on the agenda at this point. I think it was kind of a consensus of the board that felt that that was a wise thing, new reasonable thing to do. And I think it was a very well, well received format. Session we had Monday night. Some extent, we'll just play the number of people who were here. I was hoping that I've had more, but it was very well, it was very well done. I thought had some very good questions, some good comments. I can't think, I guess it was a good suggestion. So any suggestions on what we'd like to do with this? I mean, I understand the burdens is about how long prior to meeting. Sometimes we get two people, sometimes we get a lot. Talked about possibly for half an hour, forty five minutes, whatever, start out with any thoughts or on that.
I like the idea of starting with a half hour and just see what, what transpires. You know, there, like burden has, it might be a couple, it might be a lot. And, and I, I think the fact that it takes away from all the extra, you know, comments from the public too, I think that, that all of us.
Chris, what do you think? Every month or every other month or every quarter?
I mean, I think almost this should be a work in progress. Let's, let's start, you know, let's start with every month and then see if it's, if it doesn't seem to have good reception, then we can go back to, you know. The people can, people know they can always talk during comments from the public, they just can't interact. So I mean, I, I think we should start with every month and personal. Let's say for the next two, every month and just gauge it there then. See if it's in every other month, quarter after.
What do you think of the Martin one? Do you think an hour is too much or can it be better?
It varies, like it's such, it's so good. Yeah. I mean, I think right now, I think a half hour is good. That's what one thinks, like Martin's not eating more than a half hour right now. No, some other months they did eat that full hour when it's a little more pressing subjects. But they don't really do the full hour. So it starts at six and, you know, they usually end at about six fifty. So they got some time to just. But what they also do is when, like at the last meeting, um. Nobody thought that that one.
So we just vote right in. I think typically we would have posted perhaps a six thirty start for that, but board being scheduled for seven, it wouldn't begin any earlier than seven. So we probably could want to come to the board meeting, didn't get there and find out, oh, they started twenty minutes earlier. By you talked to.
The move that we begin an open forum, if that's the proper term. At six thirty, next monthly board meeting. And. Should be determined what happens thereafter.
But you need to start the regular meeting then at seven.
Right.
So regular meeting started no later than, yeah, half seven.
Just kind of a policy thing or does it?
I don't think you need to open the policies. Policy actually has the agenda for the meeting. This is, this is pre, pre meeting discussion, so really. I don't see that we can go to policy.
I think we're trying it. Know it's kind of a trial, trial period. It might be for so many times and then.
Maybe did I hear your second?
Yes. So any for the discussion. And we move the Craig, say Miami, what's your favor for a? Other discussion area, conversation on the board, preseason, the board meeting starts at six thirty P O. Right, the seven P O, meeting start.
Is this for the, is this just for the next meeting or until further notice?
I tried to say it was for next meeting and to be determined if they're.
Okay, so we need to.
If nobody shows up, maybe we try one more time and say, well, they still showed up, we say. We got a lot of people, maybe we say, oh, it'll be forty five minutes or whatever, so. Play it later.
I have a quick question for the public, if you don't mind this, Terry. So do you guys know if at Martin, do they, like the fact that they can roll right into a board meeting, is that posted in a certain way on their?
I believe so.
Because that was the meeting, I think it's start time.
When. If it ends earlier than the, those are just going to start right into the board.
Okay.
Most people, I just know that that's how it works.
Yeah.
And so they know that they want to be there for the board meeting at that time, whether they want to participate in that or not. In case there is a. In case there is a block time to do, that's always right, but and then.
I think we're.
We have, I can think of one or two times where we've had a public hearing in terms of a TPI requirement. And then we posted it for something like a public hearing at six fifty with the school board to immediately follow after, but not before seven o'clock. So that's kind of been the tradition here of the seven o'clock time that couldn't change, but just for for starters, we should probably keep it at seven. So as not to confuse.
All right, well, let's try this again. All those in favor say hi. Terry. All right, thank you. So the usual start, well, special start six thirty next month and then you follow at seven. All right.
I just make one for nine. It's not a future agenda item. It's just that, did any of you have the opportunity to see the play?
What my daughter said.
I wouldn't have thought it, you know, like that.
I was at a hockey game.
Yeah, that's incredible.
It was, there are no words for how, and and so if you don't miss those, it's, it's all I want to say, that everybody in the world, don't miss those shows. If that was over the top for a high school production.
I think all the shows are so.
I mean, I actually, although I do like Mama Mia better.
Okay. I just, I thought it was really good.
The scenery, the scene changes, the the voice, I think, like, that's high school?
No, it's very good. It just, oh, the students that were in it, I mean, I can't imagine what the, you know, teachers that were involved in it at the time, they put it by just those kids. It was right, you know, three or four hours, I mean, that they were doing since like beginning of February to the, to the show and a couple Saturdays here and there, so.
Well, to anybody that would see Gustavo or Marilyn or any of those, please give them the best or kudos, whatever, because not only are they teaching, you know, on as the students are, and they are, but this was, that's a tough show.
Glad you brought that up. I was able to go that evening with this line by a friend of mine that has only seen Les Mis around fifty times. She's been to London to see it. She's, I mean, she's, yeah, she did just over the top, but she went and talked to the young man who played the innkeeper. And oh, she said, said, you're as good as those I've seen of mine.
Yeah.
Oh, that was eight. He works at Pickley Bakery.
But if you see, like, if you YouTube high school plays of Les Mis and compared it to what it was, I mean, it was a, a very stark.
It was a Broadway show.
Every play they do is so good, though. You know, my daughter graduated in two thousand sixteen. We always made the point of going like a mother-daughter date to every place because they're just so good. And it's like unbelievable, you know, you could see something the same at the Marcus Center downtown or and just to come to a high school and say, oh, my gosh. I'll put in a plug, the next event, although I don't remember the date off PM, March seventeenth is coming into my mind, but musical theater nights in Italy. Arch, this, I think the the special thing about that is that it is not nearly as adults let. The kids decide what song, they do the choreography, they do the directing, the producing. So it's, it's truly an amazing variety show, all different styles and.
So we could talk about that next one.
Yeah, I kind of just wish they'd sell popcorn during the. People start the table next time.
How often do they?
That could be a fundraiser.
Soda, water.
A little lobster.
Yeah.
Well, we have some talented talent, students, teacher, I mean, it was, it was just awesome.
Yeah, I've seen most of the two, and this one was, this one was a whole different level. I mean, even though they're all amazing, this one was just off the charts. But I have a question about the students. How often, or this, I don't know if anybody knows this, have our students been awarded some of the awards that Wisconsin does with regards to acting? I mean, there should definitely be some in this one.
There are some that are like national.
Yeah.
Jerry awards.
Yeah.
Our performances always win a handful. There's usually a whole list of maybe thirteen nominations. And then I, just off the top of my head, I'd say three, four, five winners. And some are for like lead actor, so it's about a particular student. And then some of them are superior musical or stat.
Actually, if you can, it's nominated this year for a bunch, I think. I wanna say like a dozen.
A few years back, I don't know, I think it was like oh eight, and I'm sorry, I don't really remember the name of the play, but we won the national best.
Yes.
Best destination.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Well, we have some.
Then I think also the choir, there's still choir students that have a chance to compete at a state level, like up in Cream Bay. I know they've done that for. So that's another thing, like the teachers, they compete against, like a camp of four hundred kids or so.
All right, any future agenda items? If I have any suggestions? Every, around every March, it's the robotic display competition downtown. And I always remember a couple days after it occurred, I've been made to make it once, it's just phenomenal. If you could listen to one of those. If you haven't been out of that, it's, it's just fantastic to see what these kids do with come up with a very short period of time. They're working all year, but they have like a six-week period where they got designed and built, test the program, everything else, the robots. And they have competitions they have to do with all those past topics.
Sure, I'll look up that date and put it in your board brief.
Great, thank you. Any else? It's not, we have a possession scheduled, so whoever motioned. Go to a full session for big statue nineteen point eight five, front one, premises for possession to discussion action on superpowers' performance goals. We have, and then we can do two.
So move.
Okay, move by, second by Daryl. Starting with Daryl.